Hi, Calaveras County. This is Morgan Gache, CEO for the Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce. And I have to say, it's such an honor, and I was just mentioning, it's such an honor that I actually curled my hair today, which should say something, that I have the Board of Supervisors' Madam Chair, Marita Callaway, online with me today to share with you guys. So, Marita, thank you so much for joining us. Welcome.
My pleasure, on behalf of the board.
Great. So, what I wanted to do was dialogue a little bit with Marita because we have some bigger questions looming. And a lot of the presentations that we've been doing on behalf of the chamber have been just business-specific. And right now, I think it's advantageous for us to share for the countywide of things that impact us and with changing landscape of what's happening, just to hear from our leadership in the county of what her perspective is. So, I'm going to start, Marita. Are you receiving calls from your constituents? And what are some of their concerns that they have right now?
Yes, but let me just go back a step and address leadership.
Sure.
Under normal circumstances, I'd say normally the board makes a lot of these decisions. At a time like this, you can only have one boss. You can only have one person making the decisions. And Dr. Colada, our Public Health Officer, is making the decisions. We have an OES unit that are dealing with peripheral things that need to be done, plus answering calls from supervisors. But Dr. Colada and Public Health are the ones that are directing the direction of what we're doing, the stay-home direction. Yesterday, they came out with all the parks and local parks. The federal government has already said theirs are closed. The state said theirs are closed. And the county is now saying all parks within Calaveras, local, are closed. So, those kinds of directions need to come from Dr. Colada and the public health staff. And it's up to the rest of us to try and interpret that, and what does that mean? So, those are the kinds of calls I'm getting from people. A couple of weeks ago, it had been the sort of the Airbnb, the short-term rentals, the hotel motel. And I must say, I have to credit the realtors in this county and the property managers for shutting down their short-term rentals. A couple of weeks ago, anyway, in the Ebbets Pass area, there were at least over 300 units, excuse me, shut down due to the work of the realtors and the property managers. So, I was impressed with that.
Yeah.
Now, we move forward, and I'm hearing about, well, now the second homeowners. The community, and I'm sure this is true throughout Calaveras, it's true elsewhere, are fearful. They're concerned about their health. They're concerned about their families, their neighbors. And they see people coming and going, and that raises a fear. Well, if we do what Dr. Colada is saying, even the federal government saying, "We keep our distance. We wash our hands. We don't touch our face," then we're not putting ourselves in that position. I have a neighbor who's a second homeowner, but he and his wife have been here for over a month. Do I tell them to go back to where they live? Absolutely not. They're staying in place. But that's a concern. It's been very interesting. I also heard from a second homeowner who said, well, I've heard from several of them, and I've asked them, like you have, you know, "Please don't come. I'm requesting that. We're not mandating. We're not doing bed check." You know, "Oh, you're a second homeowner." People are very fearful, and the second homeowners I've talked to have understood that. Though the one yesterday said, "I have a second home. I've been coming up there for years. I'm a first responder. I live in the valley, Montesto, if I remember correctly, and I have to come up and do my yard clearing." Because in the Ebbets Pass area, we are very strict about yard clearing. So, as we move closer into the summer months, everybody has to start doing their 100-foot clearance and so forth. Recreation's been one. I've had some very interesting ones. One is, well, the Homeland Security said that the gun stores can be open. Can our gun stores be open? I don't know. I didn't know Homeland Security said that. So, for all of us, I know there's been concern about golf because all the recreation's been shut down. And there's a lot of golfers throughout the county. So, I'm not sure what my colleagues are hearing. I feel very isolated from them. I would love to get on a Zoom with them, but we can't do that because of an act. And I wish the governor would let us, but we can't. So, those are just some of the things I'm hearing. Oh, I have to give out credit. Caltrans has been very good working with them. They put the sign at the Utica Grade about "Stay Home, Save Lives, COVID-19." They have that sign elsewhere in the valley and going up to Tahoe and maybe other places. So, I appreciate Caltrans participating and encouraging people not to travel.
Yeah. Yeah, that's huge.
Anyway, go to your next question. I could go on with some of the interesting stuff.
Sure.
Just straight day-to-day business.
Yeah. Well, so what is, do you think the number-one concern that has to be a priority is for Calaveras County?
Health and safety.
Health and safety.
And it's painful.
Yeah.
When the governor came out with "Stay at Home" for the whole state, I was thinking, "Oh, that doesn't apply to us. We're doing just fine right now." But he was right. And if you talk to friends or family in the Bay Area or urban areas, what's happening there is moving towards the valley and the rural area. So, health and safety, that's the number-one priority. That doesn't mean we don't look at other things and consider other things, like how do we deal with the economic viability of the county when this is over? That has to be part of the discussion as a priority. But for public, excuse me, public health, for mental health people, for the ones in social services, for OES, it's the health and safety of our community.
I appreciate you saying the mental health because that doesn't just apply to people right now that have past, you know, mental health issues. This is all of us right now. I think there's a certain generalized anxiety that happens when we're facing a general or a broad-span pandemic like this. And so, that is huge. It's a fear is kind of pervasive right now.
Very much so. Very much so.
So, have you found that the folks in District 3 are adhering to both the governor's and the county's mandates? Or are you seeing maybe a little bit of hesitancy there?
Oh, no. I don't see it. I mean, you know, so you see three people standing together. You want to go up and say, you know, "Separate." But no, I think the people in District 3, and I think throughout the county, have been, for the most part, right on target. They're doing what they should do. And they are now, I think, as we've moved forward from two weeks ago, realize the seriousness of this. And Dr. Colada has made some very difficult decisions early on. And we're all finally getting the message. Yes. I'm very proud of the people in my community.
Well, speaking of the people in your community, let's talk about businesses and the health of the businesses there right now. How do you think they're going to be doing with this extended stay-in-place issue that's ordered?
Well, I think they've come up with some very creative things.
Okay.
And let me just maybe start with the winery's. Well, we could start with the restaurants. The restaurants pretty much right away closed their doors and started doing takeouts, advertising their menus online, whatever. The wineries huffed and puffed, but they shut their doors, and they're doing more online sales and/or for locals, delivery or curbside pickup, but their doors are shut. So, there has been some virtual wine tasting.
Oh, great. I love that.
Which I thought was wonderful. I think Scott Clan did the first one I ever saw at Newsome Harlow. Wineries are coming up as other businesses with creative things. One business I know is starting to do online sales. I also know Lisa Bolton is working on a program, which you probably, of course, know more about than I do, but developing a website so that our local businesses could be shop-local through the internet. I mean, I think that's wonderful. So, businesses that we did it the same way we've always done it are looking at new ways of doing things. And then there's those businesses that are going and are struggling. They're struggling personally, and they're concerned for their employees. And I think the CARES program that came out will be very helpful. And I'm hoping the Chamber and Economic Development and Motherlode Job Training will start contacting businesses that these are things that are available for you. And the other group that, you know, we sort of don't talk about, but are the independent contractors, they qualify, and the ones I talked to, they don't know about it.
Yeah.
So, how do you help me help them realize that there's a program that can help an independent contractor?
Yeah.
Or the challenge for us as a community to help our businesses.
Right. I'm so glad you highlighted that because, as you know, with some of the updates that come out, it's just a constant feed. In fact, while I was working on one of my projects this morning, I had the news going so that I could be listening to that and hearing in case I'm missing anything prior to our conversation. And that's kind of just been the way things are since this all released because, you know, at first, the only opportunity was the idle loan and the economic disaster loan provided by the SBA. And that was great, but then there was a lot of caveats there of who qualified and who didn't, namely, the, you know, independent contractors and self-employed people. And so, this is truly the payroll, no, the paycheck protection plan. There we go. So many acronyms now to keep track of, but the paycheck protection plan truly is fantastic. And that is something that we, as the chamber, are going to be highlighting a lot in the coming days because it is going to be released tomorrow. Tomorrow is when it's officially supposed to start. And so, for qualifying banks that are involved with it, this is going to be a big deal. In fact, I already talked with a bank owner that has been receiving a ton of applications already, even though it hasn't even started yet. So, time is of the essence in that because it is going to be time date stamped, and it's going to be given in the order that it's received. And so, we had a video on our chamber website, for those of you watching, that gave a description of it. Also, if you go to our chamber website, to the COVID-19 resources, there is a paycheck protection plan. We'll just say PPP. And if you click on it, it actually does have the link for the application. It's fairly easy. And so, please take a time to fill that out and talk to your bank that you bank with to make sure that they are affiliated with this. So, thank you.
I'll give you a story. I was at a virtual coffee, virtual cocktail thing, I don't know, one of the two, coffee or cocktails. And we were just talking about how to reach out to the community. And the perception was, well, a lot of the younger people aren't paying attention. They're still going to natural bridges or going to parks or what have you. And I had, someone had said to me, "Well, they don't..." I said, "Well, they can just check the website, Marita." They do not look at the website. They look at Instagram and Twitter and Facebook. And I said, "Oh, okay." So, I talked to a person who's an independent contractor in social media. He said, I said, "Well, maybe," because I have a supervisor Facebook page, "maybe I should do Twitter so I can reach out to these people." He said, "Marita, they don't know who Marita is. They don't care who Marita is, and you're too old." I said, "Oh, okay." So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is there's different ways besides a website to reach out, and we collectively have to do that.
Yeah.
And maybe you send me something that's Reader Digest short. I can put on my supervisor Facebook page. Or maybe I can help you. I do a newsletter. I'm talking to people. I can tell them that these things are available to them.
Yeah.
So, for me, it's more than, it's become more than just a website.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. Well, and another problem, too. And one of the reasons why I wanted to do videos like this, kind of unpacking everything that's going on, is because there is so much data. In fact, I was talking to one of my board members this morning, and she was just saying, "How many constant emails are coming through? It's hard to keep track of, you know, who do I follow and what information do I need to know?" And so, my goal, at least from the chamber's perspective, is to highlight some of those essential ones and unpack them to make it easier for people to understand. So, you're right. We need to, you know, disseminate the information in whatever quick and easy way to absorb for multiple age groups, right? Whether it's in 20s and 30s, 40s and 50s, 60s and 70s. And so, making sure that they understand what's available to them and taking advantage of that. So, yeah. Yeah. Well, tell me, so how is this affecting the county's budget? How is this affecting the county's finances?
I was on a Zoom with four other counties. And all of us, the supervisors, we're all supervisors, saying the same thing. We don't know. We know our sales taxes will be down. We know that the short terminals, the TOT, transit occupancy tax, will be down. Do not know the impact really of the real estate market since realtors now can't, you know, go inside houses to show them what that will happen. So, we don't know. We're all expecting to really have to tighten up what we're doing. The county, Calaveras, the board has committed to keeping the employees paid and employed as long as we can.
That's great.
And then at some point, we're going to have to pay the piper, and how do we do that? And we don't know. But I don't think it'll be a whole lot different than what we did when the recession hit. And it's not something any of us are looking forward to, but it's something that, when we made the commitment as the board, we realized we were going to have to deal with it when we got to budget.
I know this is a very different kind of disaster than the Butte Fire, but is the stance of kind of addressing the finances and budget for the county similar in perspective to that of the Butte Fire?
What are the things we're doing, which we probably didn't do as good a job during the Butte, is we're documenting everything. So, at some point, we are hoping we can submit what we have been spending to FEMA or whomever it might be to try and get reimbursement for this.
Yeah.
So, until that happens, the county, and this is true, I'm sure of all counties, are having to dig into whatever reserves or contingencies or telling the departments, which we've already have, "Don't spend anything at all, except, you know, salaries, to find the money to pay for the services we're still trying to provide." Because we still have government to run. There are still recordings of documents. I don't know if anybody's getting married, but if they are, you know, they're going to want to have it recorded. Escrows are closing. They need to be recorded. The tax collector is still having to receive tax payments, which are due. And she cannot, our treasurer, tax collector, Barbara Sullivan, cannot waive the due date. Only the governor can do that, and that's not happening. Which, from a county perspective, it probably said, "We understand because that's what's being used to pay for services." You know, first responders, the district attorney, probation, the sheriff. All those services still need to be provided to the public.
Yeah.
So...
Well, speaking of probation, I wanted to ask you your thoughts on, you know, with the governor's release of the prisoners. And what do you see that impact being on our county?
Thank you for asking. I had been talking or emailing or texting. I'm not sure today what I'm doing. With the sheriff, there will be no impact to Calaveras on that. And if there, they were, it would be under probation versus the sheriff. They would not be released to go to jail. The sheriff is being very strict about who gets in. Like, if you have a DUI from the CHP, it's sort of catch and release at the moment, unless it's a lot more significant. So, we will have no impact from that.
Good. Okay. What about our jail here in the county? Is there any concerns about the spread of COVID-19, and what precautions are they taking there?
Yes. I mean, yeah, the sheriff is concerned, but he is taking the strictest of precautions in the jail in terms of cleanliness, in terms of making sure that the inmates are doing what's necessary. So, he's very cognizant of that, and we have not had any problems in the jail through the extra work that the jail staff's doing.
That's great. That's really great.
Yeah, it is because it's a closely confined group of people.
Right. Very closely confined. Yeah. Well, and for the safety of all the employees there at the jail, not just the inmates, but also, you know, all those people that have to keep coming in there, you know, that's definitely a concern for the county. So, what about our homeless population? What's happening with our homeless population here in Calaveras County?
Well, that's very interesting. I was, yesterday, I was up at the Ebbets Pass Moose Lodge. This is just, I have stories for everything, so.
That's great.
Moose Lodge because they're making food to go on Monday, Wednesday, Friday for the community. And it's just a donation. It's free. And this homeless man, who we've all, Ebbets Pass, seen, he came to pick up a sandwich, and he pulled a kind of a raggedy, dirty dollar out of his pocket. I'll cry, and put it in the donation bucket. You know, it's... I cry at home at commercials, but here, you know, the Moose Lodge was doing a lot. And here's somebody who needed help, but he wasn't going to take it just for free. So, how do we deal with them? Kristen Stranger, our Health and Human Services Director, is on top of this. And I know the federal government and Governor Newsom is really concerned about our homeless population. And she'd probably be the best, but, you know, they're turning hotel motels into shelters for the homeless. And we can't pretend that they don't exist.
Yeah.
And we need to take care of them as well. So, I would recommend she'd be an interesting one to talk to. She'd have more facts. So, the board might have to make some decisions, but I'm totally supportive of what it is we need to do for our community. And the homeless are part of our community.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Let me ask you then, what is something, because, you know, granted, we're all trying to, you know, keep our social distancing and... But what is something that you could tell us that we can do right now? I'm catching off guard, but what can we do? What can we do to help our community right now?
Well, I'm looking at it two ways. First, you have to kind of help yourself.
Yeah.
You have to take care of yourself. You have to keep your social distance. You have to wash your hands, and you have to not touch your face.
Do as I say, not as I do, right?
Those are things that we all must be doing. And I have a group of people I've been working with. What is it we can do exactly? We're all, you're hearing from government, "What you can't do, what you can't do, what you can't do." Well, I have a friend who's an artist, and she said, "Why don't we make little art pieces, like little hearts, or put a message on it that says 'Smile' or 'You're okay,'" and hang them all around the trees in town or on fences in the community? Or put something in your front yard that's whimsical. She had an old wooden brown horse in her front yard. She painted it white. Now guaranteed, she's an artist. And she put a unicorn horn on it.
Nice.
And you walk by and you see this white unicorn instead of a dirty brown horse in her front yard. A friend of mine who's a gardener said, "Why don't we get pots? We all have pots that we don't use. Put them out in front of our house with some seeds and saying, 'Take them,' and people can just take it and go plant, you know, parsley or petunias."
Sure.
Well, that's a good idea. I'm doing six-foot walks with neighbors. Going on walks and we're keeping our six-foot distance. I went on my six-foot walk with my Sunday morning gym partner. We can't gym together, but he and his wife and I went on our six-foot, the three of us, we're each six feet apart, on a walk. So, doing virtual concerts. There's one this Saturday night that the Murphy School of Music's doing. I had to buy a ticket to it, but that helps support the musicians. What is it we can do? Order a meal, one meal from a restaurant. I, so I try and do that, you know, call your favorite winery and order a bottle or two of wine. I mean, there's things that we can do besides, you know, call neighbor to neighbor. Anyway, so, yeah, I am looking at things that we can do.
Sure.
Besides cleaning our sock drawer.
Yeah. Yeah. There's only so many socks you can actually take care of, so.
Yeah.
Well, we're not there yet. We're not there yet. But what do you anticipate recovery is going to look like for Calaveras County?
That's one of the things that's a priority, is we are, we, and I say "we," it's mostly our CAO, but we've talked about it as a board. We need to look at what economic recovery is. And one, we need to really depend on the Chamber, Motherlode Training, the Economic Development Group, on helping our businesses, be it a sole proprietor or be it an independent contractor, or be it at the local retail store, get back into business. How do we help them do that? What Lisa Bolton's doing. We're starting now to help them for what we need tomorrow. Make sure that all the plans are out. What resources are available to them? What kinds of things can the county do? You know, it might be, and I'm not saying we can use taxpayer money necessarily because we don't have any to subsidize, but to make sure that projects can be finalized without an extra expense.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to take government and the community and our business associations. When I say that, I mean like you, like the Chamber, Economic Development, to help us through this and to help us through this after it's over.
Yeah.
We don't let up just because... We don't let up just because we're now all getting to go to lunch together or go to a movie with family. And while I have you on Zoom, I do want to promote the county's information, community information line on anything people want to talk about. And the number seven, five, four, two, eight, nine, six.
I'll put it in the comments below.
Well, thank you very much. So, yeah, it's a disaster. It's going to be felt for years to come. And our work will just be starting when this is over.
Yeah. That hotline is, is really great. And to our viewers, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions that you have. I've already stated, my, my phone is answered seven days a week. It may go to my voicemail. I may not be able to answer it right away. But there's been times where I've, I've had people, you know, hey, call the hotline. And it's great to have one source there because then we can also track, you know, where we're at in the county and know. So there's a lot of great associations out there that can help support, but having a funneled location where we can collect data and, and also know how to support businesses and just individual community members as a whole. So I know they have six people there that are working hard every day to, you know, support you the best way they can. So please, if you have any questions there, please reach out to the hotline, which I'll put down there. Yeah. And I'll also say too now, the Visitors Bureau is now on furlough for a little bit. And so back until we're ready to invite people into the county. And so in the collaboration of volunteers, meaning Martin Huberty and Cadence Eaton, both have volunteered their time to help support along with the Chamber. We have the live restaurant list for the entire county that is on the website. And I will make sure to share that out as well, but we're also today going to be listing kind of what Arida was talking about with Lisa Bolton's Murphy's version. We're going to have an entire county version for retail as well. How you can support them, how you can, hey, maybe money is tight right now and you don't have the ability to go spend money. And so instead, leave them an online review, go to Yelp and thank them, you know, for what they've done. So that's another way that we can contribute to our businesses in the community. That's, that's huge. So.
I have another creative thing. I was at Sierra Hills Market in Murphy's and in their bread aisle, they had bread from Aria Bakery and Todd's Bread. Todd makes this awesome French bread. And, you know, it wasn't the commercial breads I always buy. And I thanked the grocery store for helping the local businesses and an independent business person with their product in this commercial store. It was very, it was very nice to see. So it's neighbor helping neighbor, business helping.
Well, on that note, I'm going to ask you something that I ask every person that I've been talking with. And that's because I, I think a word that I want to keep focusing in on is hope. Hope for what can be and hope for what can come from this. And so my question to you, Marita, is what are you hopeful about through this process for Calaveras County?
It will reinforce the fact that we are a community. And my experience with Calaveras, if anyone is in trouble, you might grouse at them and you don't like them for whatever reason. If they're in trouble, we circle the wagons. And I see that happening. I have people calling me wanting to volunteer. And I just, as a county, we're going to come out stronger for this. I don't know what it'll look like, but we're going to come out stronger.
Well, there you have it from Madam Chair herself, Marita Callaway. Thank you so much for spending time talking to us today and giving us, you know, a little bit of your heart today. I appreciate that. And it's invaluable as, you know, your constituents and your community members in the county, we appreciate you. And we appreciate you highlighting, you know, some of the other leaders. And just really looking forward to what hope we can think of moving forward for Calaveras County. So thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you on behalf of the board.